I want you all to join us in the invocation by Mr. Ayers here. We'll get it rolling.
Heavenly Father, just come to you tonight, just knowing that, number one, across the world tonight, lots of people are hurting. I just want you to put your hand on them. I also want to take and ask you that tomorrow, we're expecting a lot of difficult weather in the area, that you keep your eye on us and make sure that everybody here in town and across our state is safe. I also want to ask you to give us the wisdom to go through tonight's agenda, listen, and make good decisions for the town. In these things, I pray in your son's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Stephen. All righty, we'll open up with public comments, and we have one. Mr. Edwin Ehlum, just come up and state your name and address, and welcome.
Edwin Ehlum, Waxall, North Carolina, on Miller Drive, to Mayor Dunn, to Mayor Pro Tem, David Scoble, in his absence, to the city council members, to the clerk, to the town manager, and to the attorney. I greet you today to let you know that I am a candidate for Union County Commissioner. Wanted to stop and share with you that we are involved in the community. I am chairman of the Sheriff's Crime Prevention Committees. I'm on the board of Crime Stoppers, also a member of Rotary, Civitan, board member, and also the Lions Club. I live in Waxall with my wife for 10 years, and we just wanted to attend all the municipalities, which we've gotten to just about everybody, except for you, Wesley Chapel, and Henry Bridge. So, we're making the rounds, and then just wanted to also share with you as I take my seat, that we're not a part of any group that wants to tell any municipality how to run its jurisdiction. We are a partner to all those persons who love Union County, and there are many, and there are people even hurting right here in Union County. So, God bless you all, and we will stay for the full meeting. God bless you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ehlum. Did anybody else wish to speak during public comments? We can talk about any topic. If they didn't sign up, all right. All right, if not, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Any questions about the consent agenda? Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, motion by Mr. Ayers. Second by Ms. Drake. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All righty, reports. I don't have anything, so we'll start with Graham. You got anything for us tonight?
No, sir.
All right, Ms. Drake?
No, sir.
All right, and our new board member, welcome.
Thank you.
It was your second meeting, though, but the first one was a whirlwind.
Yeah, that was a half a meeting.
So, you got anything you want to report to us today?
No, I just did my boot camp today.
Yeah, well, appreciate you doing this. Long day, so, but welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, Stephen?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, just two things. Just, I did do kind of a review of prospective business that's thinking about coming to town. I think everything went real well. I liked what I saw there. Looks like they had a pretty good shop, so I won't mention any names, just simply because it's still something that is potential and not something written in stone. And then I also wanted to make a note, again, to Sergeant Davis, and Stallings has a CERT team, which is sort of like the community volunteer wing of FEMA in Stallings, and we're one of the few towns in Stallings, I mean, in the state of North Carolina that actually has a CERT team, and that is the Citizens' Emergency Response Team. And I know that we don't often see emergencies here in our area, which probably means we're least prepared than probably a lot of folks are, but it was actually a really good meeting. I kind of didn't know what to expect, and it was run very well, and they're going to be doing approximately one training a month on life-saving techniques, just knowledge-based, and they're either going to be using our facilities or the park, and just want to try to make sure that we're showing them support. They are backed by our police team, so just want to make sure that we kind of make sure that we're integrating them into our routines as far as communication and just making sure that we make sure that they're legitimized and that people are aware of them and know about the free training that comes through them. That's it.
All right. Well, one thing I forgot that I mentioned to the council. I met with Pastor Scott. He's a pastor down at Stallings United Methodist. They're not called that anymore. The Methodist Church had some sort of split, but it's still on the side. He's starting a thing called the Gratitude Initiative, and he's already talked with Chief Franks about that, and, you know, they hold their book bash, and so I met with him, and so we're bringing in CEM, the hospital, and it's just a way of spreading gratitude to teachers, firefighters, first responders, police department, workers, town workers, just spreading gratitude in the community. That's his mission. That's his passion. So, I'll be involved, and hopefully we'll get the council involved somewhat, but we don't know what it looks like yet, but so, but we're getting it started, so you'll be hearing a lot about it. So, and so, go from there. Alex, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick things. I want to reiterate, our Employee of the Year is Ms. Eunice Donnelly, so way to go, Eunice. I don't think she was at the last one, so I wouldn't embarrass her, as well as Ty Pham is our Officer of the Year, so way to go. Ty is not here, so, but when we see Ty, please congratulate him. They've done a great job. I'm really proud of both of them. As Councilmember Waddawitz mentioned, we had our new member boot camp orientation, so thank you, Laurie, for your time and commitment to do that, and thank you to all our council, our staff who made that happen. So, thank you all. And then finally, as Councilmember Ayers mentioned, and thank you for that prayer, we've got some bad weather coming, so we've talked about it as a staff, and we've already been putting in place some steps to keep everybody safe. With everything we do, our first priority has to be to keep each other safe. So, that concludes our report. Thank you.
All righty. See, any other departments' chief or Eunice, did y'all have anything you want to talk about tonight? All righty, all righty. Next up is our agenda approval. One thing we want to add is Alex on his email out Friday about the powder coatings for the mast arm, so we'll add that in under 5A. All right, anybody else? Any more additions, deletions? Can I get a motion in to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda with the addition of 5A to discuss powder coatings.
All right, thank you, Graham. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, Mr. Hall has made the motion, Mr. Ayers on the second. So, as y'all know, Mary is filling in today.
Hi, Mary.
Our clerk there, so Aaron's going to be out of pocket tomorrow, so we'll lift her up in prayer for her, little procedure she's having. All righty, next up is Ripple Fiber. Kevin, appreciate you being here tonight.
Hey. Hopefully, everybody had good holidays.
Always.
Bear with me one second here. Okay. Well, again, good evening, and again, hopefully, everybody had good holidays. If y'all aren't aware, Ripple Fiber has begun installing fiber infrastructure throughout some of the residential subdivisions within Stallings. They've kind of been working towards the south side of town with the goal to expand to every subdivision throughout Stallings, and so we have a few representatives from Ripple here to really just introduce themselves, introduce Ripple, walk through the construction process, and really open it up for Q and A, not only for your information, but to allow you to better guide residents if and when residents come out and have any questions, approach y'all, and have any questions throughout this process. And so, with that, I can turn it over to Bill here.
To Bill. Thank you, council. Appreciate you taking the time to hear from us today. We had a brief presentation, but we're going to improvise instead. So, we'll get that over to you guys for your review shortly. Ripple Fiber really is new to the area, but been here for a long time, if you will. So, we actually got our roots from South Africa as a South African brand that replaced what was their cable infrastructure, which was made out of copper, the same as ours is today, as it was being, let's say, taken from the ground and resold, repurposed, not for internet or for cable television, but as a commodity to be taken out. So, their shift to fiber happened in the early 90s, well ahead of what you see here in domestic North America. So, the U.S. market relied on the cable franchise mindset, where cable television rolled out in the mid 70s and brought that out to introduce new technology. We've been very excited about it, you know, up until a point, but our needs over the last 15 years have changed, and in the last five have really accelerated, to be a lot of work from home, work remote, a lot of information passed digitally, that we just didn't have those requirements years ago. So, our investors and founders saw a need within the U.S. to upgrade infrastructure, and you're seeing now, in the last two to three years, fiber really being a conversation that takes place, not only in your, let's say, suburban settings where, or maybe urban settings, where you're looking at the downtowns and the high-rises, but taking that technology and bringing it out to your individual home. The need from the home is, again, increased significantly, so we are trying to work towards bringing and developing our own infrastructure that comes out to the residents of different communities. We've started here in North Carolina and been rolling now for quite some time throughout the Union County area. So, we started our construction in Union County right near the end of 2022, and right now, we're already currently working in the Stallings area to provide internet services. So, you may recognize some of the information that is on the side of the road, is Ripple Fiber is very bright. It's yellow. It sticks out. We consider ourselves the brightest of all the companies that are probably doing business in your city. As a resident myself, I can tell you, when I moved here in 2003, this was kind of perceived as being on the outskirts of the city. Today, it's not. I mean, today, we can look at this building itself and a lot of the investments that's been made with inside Stallings. We know the future, what holds to be a very, very bright future for us, and this is next-generation technology, which is coming to our town. Again, what seemed to be on the outskirts, no, it's not. This same technology of fiber optics was placed to high-rises back when I first moved out here, and now that same technology is coming to your individual doorstep via, really no cost to the town or the city. So, we're very, very excited for what, you know, the future holds for the residents, and that's where we kind of go to. Our future is very bright, okay, and we try to communicate effectively out to the residents in advance with advanced door hangers of the activity upcoming construction that will take place with inside the community. We communicate effectively with your engineering department of the town and share with them our build sheets. We attend every 811 meeting, the NC 811 dig, you know, call before you dig. We attend each and every one of those meetings. It's held here locally within insider geography. So, we work with all the municipalities to try to bring forward locates and everything before we even get started, okay, with our construction, but it is construction. So, what we want to prep you for is just if you have concerns, if there's something that's happened, a community in distress, you know, who feels like they just, they didn't receive enough information, or they're having a problem, our intention is 100% restoration to pre-construction condition or better. Okay, so that is right from us as a company. We offer a one-year guarantee for that. It's really about funneling the problems or issues associated with construction back to us, because we can't fix what we don't know about. We use a ticketing system, which is fully automated, done right through the Ripple website. We also, in every market, stand up our own individual retail location, which here is located in downtown Matthews on John Street. So, you have a local presence with a local phone number, with local people, with a local staff, much of whom is here today, that you can speak to directly about any concerns. They've already been working closely with Kevin on various aspects of the build, and will continue that throughout the build process. But as a company, we're not flash in the pan, put the tech in and walk away. We're here. We're part of your community, okay? So, I feel like that was very important to stress that. Know that we want to do something different. This is next generation, so it's not what you've had before, although we've looked at it from a standpoint of what we wanted to do is change the way that people perceive internet. We know that bill escalated bills, non-transparency in billing, equipment cost adds, taxes and fee build outs, where you get quoted one price and your price is here monthly. You know, we are fully transparent. The price you see on our website is the price. It's all-inclusive. It has no contract, no contract, and no taxes and fees added. No equipment fees are added, yet we provide cutting-edge Nokia equipment to every house. It's glass all the way through, so it's fiber to your house directly on an individual circuit into the community. A concern to be is more pedestals out in front of homes, and we do not pedestal. So, we are fully subterranean, and we use subterranean DAP interconnects, so there is no pedestal left in the residence yard or shared pedestals with anybody. We take that connection directly to their home. So, I had a PowerPoint that probably would have kept me a bit more on track, but I know that time is limited, and I want to respect that. More people ask questions. I feel like that maybe that's the best place for us to go from here, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, well, Bill, tell us your last name.
My last name is Grogan, G-R-O-G-A-N.
Okay.
And I'm a resident of Chestnut Oaks.
Okay, well, that was my next question. So, when will the service begin? When do you have a projection on that?
So, projection for service going live within our geography is based on NC DOT contracts across some critical road crossings. That's really been, I'd love to throw you a date. Our build of what we can control, which is inside the neighborhoods where we are permitted, that looks to probably wrap up within the next three months. So, we should be pretty well buttoned up with everything ready to go, with the exception of just some primary road crossings. We've, there's been a change within the department that regulates Union County at the NC DOT level that just has taken place, and this, we're just kind of starting in the last few days, new ability. So, we will communicate effectively with you and make sure that that information is shared along the way. Our goal would be to be up by mid-year.
Okay.
Up and running for the residents.
Well, appreciate you being in Stallings.
Absolutely.
Stephen?
All right, so, how many neighborhoods are you in, then, if you say in the next three months? Because I know that there's neighborhoods that are still trying to petition you to come into those neighborhoods. So, you said three months. That sounds...
So, initially, Steve, like, we have various phased plans, and as part of my presentation, I would share those with you.
Okay.
One of those, if you, you know, just within Stallings, the confines, you know, it kind of runs the, I guess, the 51, like 70, what is it, 45 corridor, like kind of a, I don't even know the direction, like north-south, I guess, would kind of be Stallings, right in its orientation. We're in 65% of the communities planned for construction. We, I think Shanama was one that came up. My neighborhood, Chestnut Oaks, has already been built, so, you know, that's kind of the two ends, I would say, or close to the two ends of it. We've already done Brookhaven, which is Indian Trail, but we've also gone through parts of Collinwood, which is behind Chestnut, which is kind of 50/50. I think that's half Stallings and half Indian Trail. So, our build within neighborhoods such as Chestnut Oaks, 160 homes, really, the work is done by hand, so we don't bring in heavy equipment and roll that through the neighborhood to destroy roads. Everything's hand-dug. We were in and out of that Chestnut, Chestnut Oaks, 160 homes in six days, six business days. So, to give you an idea, the velocity of the actual build is not long, and the better part is, we put everything in the ground hollow, the infrastructure. As people order it, we connect the infrastructure to the home. As it comes up live, when we bring live services to your home, we actually feed the fiber from a centralized unit in the neighborhood called an FDH, which is subterranean, and we blow the fiber to the individual homeowner through the conduit that we've already put in the ground. So, there's no need to keep re-entering the ground once that construction build is done, and all those services are done through a small transit van and/or lightweight mid-size pickup. So, we're not rolling heavy trucks in and out of neighborhoods, which I think is just a big relief for a town such as Stallings, where, you know, you own and manage your own roads. You know, you could, that can be a problem. So, we really recognize our technology to be unique, and that will be also be in that slideshow. So, if you have questions regarding the slides, we have Steve Boyle, who's here, is the local market manager. I myself head up our, like, franchise team, so I'm part of our growth across not only North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia, but hopefully even further. Jason Poderski stands as our representation for, let's say, all government matters.
Director of Government Affairs.
Director of Government Affairs, and Rob is a local representative who works the sales market and also a resident of Stallings, and we have Ryan, who is also our construction VP for North Carolina. So, we have a market team put together as part of the presentation, and again, if you have concerns, I would ask only, just please reach out. If you need a more in-depth, maybe, sit-down to be able to walk through pieces, or you want to understand our ticketing system, or you have a comms team as part of the town who may field some of these calls from residents, be more happy to educate anybody on how to get that directly over to Ripple Fiber as soon as possible. We do restoration as we go, but we also then do a walk with each HOA neighborhood president to say, hey, are you satisfied? You know, have we lived up to what we said we would do? And we will close then and show them the closed tickets for each of those things. Again, we offer a one-year resolu-, you know, warranty to it, so even if the tickets are closed, that doesn't mean we're going to stop coming back. If you had a problem and you realize a sprinkler area was soft next spring, when you turn your sprinkler on, well, we're going to come back out and fix that. So, all we just ask is for a fair opportunity to address it, but we work all of our tickets from a gross meantime to repair of less than five days. So, you know, any emergency tickets are called in immediately, 911 and 811, but any even just residential concern is tried to be addressed in five business days.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to say that I did use their, we did get a plane at Stallings Fest. I did use the ticketing system. I did get a call the next business day, and they even sent me up to kind of the second level to answer questions, and so they genuinely thought, I will say, genuinely sounded like y'all were interested in trying to resolve issues and make sure people were taken care of. I was pretty happy with the conversation. I mean, stayed on the phone with me for about, y'all know me, I like to talk and ask questions. So, I mean, it was probably 45 minutes on the phone, so I do appreciate it. I think it was good.
All right.
Thank you. We really, that's phenomenal feedback.
And now, everybody that I know in my district lives on, you know, Monroe Road, and so, those are the communities that are probably looking for you guys to come through.
Yeah, and that is, because of some of the widening and some of the projects, we know that's not in our original plan, I'd say, right? Just because of those areas, we're having a really challenging time, and I'll say the word again, NC DOT. You guys know what that means, so...
There's no reason to use harsh language.
So, it's just, there clearly are delays. There's a lot, I mean, we're a phenomenal city overall, right, with a lot of growth and expansion, and we're seeing it now really impact this area. They're overwhelmed, and we need key junctions to be passed, under 74, you know, over 16 in Waxall. There's just some real key, and now here, directly out in front of us, I mean, there's just some real key pieces, and they're just very slow to react. There have been changes that have happened in NC DOT in the last week that will impact us stepping, moving forward for all, everybody in this room.
Positive or negative, or don't know?
Very positive, some just personnel shift and leadership change that I think will hopefully move some things forward.
All right, Graham, you got a question?
So, you're going into Shanama. Is there plans to expand beyond that? And the reason I'm asking is if people ask, well, Shanama is getting fiber, why aren't we, like my neighborhood or another adjoining neighborhood? I would like to have an answer.
So, yes. So, we had projected, from an investment standpoint, we had projected an initial build of eight phases of Union County, Stallings being almost two phases of that. What we've found is now we're already at nine phases. We've since added on the west side of Charlotte, so the King's Mountain Shelby in towards Cramerton area, and with that, we've gone and we're a fully-funded company. We just received monies, which I'll present to you in the slide presentation, that we're securing as we speak, and that is massive. So, once that's done, this was, Matthews served as our proof of concept, and really, Union County, you could almost say, is somewhat proof of concept, because it allowed us to expand in the Outer Banks. We're doing from the 64 connector all the way up through Corolla, and then you have Pinehurst, which is two kind of sides of town, which is Pinehurst Central, Southern Pines, and then we're headed out into the west end of Pinehurst, so another community where we've already been building. We are here, again, and on the other side of Charlotte, so we have all of Union County, we have Matthews, and we have what we refer to as Western Carolina, and we're getting plans now to break into Cramerton and looking to set up an office there. We just announced our plans to expand.
That's to help a little bit.
Oh, that'd be great, yeah. I don't know if you guys can see how fast this is, but we are expanding out into Lexington, South Carolina. We have an office that we just opened in Greenville, South Carolina. So, you know, a year ago, we were a 12-person company. I was one of 12. Today, when we walked into work, we were 91 people. So, to give you an idea of just how fast the growth is and the need is, it's evident that, you know, people feel complacent to say, I'm fine with what I have right now, right up until you've changed your technology from 1970 to 2024. And what we're getting now is a very positive feedback, which is, can you come and do that for our neighborhood? So, I would say, once we have our financing secure and our build-out is completed, and we really get these projects with NC DOT completed, we will have a full network with redundancy built on. That will be our expansion point. So, I would say probably near the end of this year, we would be ready to announce our second-phase development of Union County. Our goal right now, where we were in the first phase, was 40, right around 45,000 homes. That's since expanded to around 75,000, and as we look into 2025, that number will probably raise over about 110,000 service done. What scale will be in Charlotte, but we're not going downtown. You know, we're not going to Mecklenburg. That's not really like our plan, maybe outline pieces of Mecklenburg, but we try to go where fiber's not right now. We want to be the first in. Our goal is to really try to look at underserved communities, so we're not in the epicenter. We're not looking for the glitz and glamour show. We don't try to carry that name or branding. What we look for and where we came in South Africa is we had a product called Net 99 that serviced the shanty, truly. It was fiber to the shanty. It was like, you know, the disparity of economics in South Africa is vast, and, you know, the leadership of the company is very, very, very committed in equity and bringing their services, albeit high-end and very technological, to everybody in the community. And that's going to be our focus moving forward. So, we bring that out to the community here, and we'll do that, so we will try to build and touch as many people as we can.
So, let me understand, but you'll offer phone, internet, and TV?
So, that's a great question. We are an internet primary provider. We do offer a voice solution if you feel like that's necessary. We're finding that people who have a present voice solution don't carry it forward, because most people don't use it in the first place and felt like they were bamboozled into it. So, we offer it if you have to have it, but we're not selling it as part of a bundle or a package.
Okay.
As for TV... As for TV, um, the moniker of TV and the whole idea of cable franchising is again, a kind of a seventies conversation. Streaming is superior. It allows you to make à la carte choices. The only reason that streaming isn't really something that we all talk about or haven't talked about is because your internet provider, who also owns the cable TV franchise, doesn't want to shoot themselves in the foot. So if you had a superior way to have a product that ours is fully symmetrical, we sell a quarter gig up and down. That's two-hundred-and-fifty megabytes upload and download. So most of your current service providers would be looking at it as download only and they'll go best of, best of class services that they can offer, which means there's no guarantee of services. Um, it's built to be oversubscribed at about a three-hundred percent ratio. We undersubscribe our entire network and we give a guarantee of being within that speed range specifically on Ethernet. So we, we will provide what we provide via Ethernet. Wi-Fi routers have different capabilities. But we have an eighty-five-dollar gig up, gig down product. That's taxes, fees, all the equipment, a mesh network in your home with extenders, all included. No installation charge, no contract. That's amazing. I mean, it really is game changer. So it's like this is the, we, we really have a good feeling. We want you to have a good feeling, want to participate in the community. What you need from us is, you know, if you need something, please just pick up the phone and call. If there's something we can do to help, the local team is prepared to help you in any way. And that's volunteer support programs that you're interested in, we're interested in. If there's somebody who has to have service and we can help, we will. I would ask you as, you know, town council, you know, reach out to your peers. You know, Indian Trail Mayor, um, very familiar with us. You know, we've spent a lot of time in Indian Trail. They can share all the good and the bad of, you know, doing business and construction, but they'll, you'll give you where we really come from, which is follow through. We will follow through for you. Okay?
All right. Oh, you got another question?
Just that my district needs some, some yellow highlighting, that's all. That's all I'm saying. And I know, I know it's probably because of the Monroe Road expansion work. But I will say that I, I hear on the Facebook groups.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, there are several neighborhoods within that corridor that are, are not going to be happy to see that map, that's for sure. Because they've talked about you guys getting in there.
Why don't we, uh, plan on a little bit of follow-up to be able to hear what you feel the hot areas are? And again, we're listening. So if there's something where you feel we need to expand into, as long as we can see it from an infrastructure to support it standpoint, I'm not going to tell you now.
Okay.
Okay?
Kevin has all your contact information. He knows all yours.
He does. He is the whole team.
All right.
Just one last question. So how, uh, the construction portion, how, when you're digging up, how big is this? Like, is this a six-foot wide?
That's a great question. So we, the conduit which we place, um, you've seen on the side of the road before. However, what we fill it with is individual ducts. So traditionally you would see conduit, it's about this big around, about size of a soda can, typically colored orange.
Props.
Props. So, um, what makes, we, we use a company called Hexatronic out of Sweden. Our technology is bespoke. We use our own infrastructure. So we're using different switching infrastructure. We're not sharing anything with anybody. It's a hundred percent proprietary. Um, we do mostly subterranean, um, unless we were asked by the community not to do subterranean. We will do pedestals. The pedestals can service up to a hundred and twenty-some homes where what you're using is seeing again as a pedestal every other home. So our services that are subterranean can service upwards of ninety homes. Um, we usually try to connect them about seventy apiece to allow for future expansion or multiple services to a community. These individual ducts would come to your individual home. So this would run a pipe like this, such as through your yard, which is done in a, what we refer to as a stitching process. It's almost like they split the ground and just tuck this down into the ground. So not very invasive, but your sprinkler system, which was never marked and has no locates in it, um, gets hit by that and can be hit. That's one of the biggest concerns we get out of the ticketing system. Okay? So when we go to go what's referred to as lateral, out of the right of way, over to the house to connect this, which is the termination point of fiber outside your home. This product is basically makes your home fiber ready. You have to have it to have our service. But in instances, townhome communities, like for instance, Lake Park has six different like townhome communities within its proper lake park. Okay, so there's individual homeowners and then there's the townhome communities. We sign blanket agreements with them to install these. So every home where the property, the land is managed by the, the association, every home has one of these on it, so they're fiber ready. They don't ever have to come back and dig in the ground again. It's done, done and done-er, right? And that's what we would encourage per the HOAs. Rob and Steve and the team locally, they'll reach out to the local HOAs to be able to make contact and describe this process. But otherwise, it's done by hand. We put a hole about every fifteen feet, Fair? Yeah, fifteen to twenty feet. Um, our holes, um, are roughly about that big. Okay, so they're about the width of your arm span at the greatest because we drop what's called a missile into the ground. A missile again looks like multiple beer cans, like a, a tennis ball cannon. It's like multiple beer cans, hydraulic ram that's pneumatically driven. So it hooks to a compressor and that's about the noisiest part of the operation is just hearing that bup, bup, bup. And it just slowly goes through the ground. So the compaction and things like that under roadways are all N C D O T approved. You know, we're going to keep all of that there. Otherwise, we simply work within the right of way. Um, and we do that via permits, which we've been working with the town on. Very minimal impact. We fold back the, 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 the land after we do some compaction even on the individual property. You know, it's, it's kind of funny, the better the yard, the better that all turns out. The worse your yard, it doesn't have anything to stick to when you cut it. It just falls all apart and there's nothing really left. We overseed and we hay. Um, but if it's Bermuda, you can't overseed Bermuda, so we'll replace with sod. Um, if we go into a neighborhood or there's a private community, we'll have talked through the restoration process. And all we ask is that while we're digging and we went into your yard, we might have to come back in during that first like week, two-week period. That's not the final product. But we will come and do that final walk and bring things to full restoration and call it a day, unless it's like, uh, growing grass, especially Bermuda grass in the middle of January. That's not going to happen. So we're going to do that sodding later in the season and we'll have spoken to that directly so that that can be communicated fairly to each community. Is that fair? You know, that's, that's kind of, does that help answer that question?
Yes.
Total build weeks.
Simplify that, it's one hole like this wide and then you put the device in there and it drills underground from there. So it's one hole that is fair for you on five feet or so.
Yeah, yeah, please, yeah, please, please.
Vice President of Construction is the best person to answer.
So you'll end up, like you said, the, the holes for that missile device for, inside your residential neighborhoods, they'll be about four to five feet long. They'll be about eighteen inches wide and about two feet deep. And we'll dig those about every twenty feet. So depending on how long your front edge is, you might have three, four, five holes. Um, and then again, we'll backfill them once the pipe is in, compact everything, lay the sod back down. Um, you know, again, he went through the whole restoration process. But so you might end up with four to five holes throughout your yard that will all be replaced.
Yeah, that's why I was just trying to visualize it.
And I live like, I just had it happen to me and I planted, purposely planted the, a very all-new, brand-new, brand-new yard before the construction came just so I could demonstrate to everybody like, hey, I'm willing to do it too. I'm a participant, but I'm also willing to be a, you know, I want to be a customer desperately. Um, turned out great. Um, you know, if you're in a cul-de-sac, you know, it's a radius. So it's a little bit more holes, if that makes sense, because you have to make it go around the radius. Um, but otherwise, everybody was, they were thrilled. I mean, we were down a road, we come in kind of as a bit of a gang because it is, it is, um, hand dug. So you might see twenty people. That's, that's one of the things. And so we try to work with the HOA on where to put the cars. And, you know, we don't do lane closures. If we needed to, we'd already had that approved as part of the permitting process. So we, we, we try to be as minimal as possible. We tried to get our contractors to put their cars down in our pool parking lot. Does that make sense? So it's like, we, we, we're trying to work with everybody individually to meet their concerns as we go.
Well, Bill, I appreciate y'all being here tonight.
No problem. Thank you very, very much.
A lot of detail. Thank you.
Yep.
And I'll just add that we have an FAQ page, um, on our website under Engineering Announcements that directs, uh, individuals to their contacts admission form. It walks them through the, the process and how to get any issues rectified as well. So that's under Engineering Announcements on our website, so.
All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Alex with our twenty-three, twenty-four priorities and Kurt's here. Thank you for being here, Kurt.
All right. Good evening again, everyone. Uh, thank you for taking the time to, uh, consider the January update, the mid-year update for our strategic priorities and action strategies. The way we think about this is almost like a strategic plan for the year. Um, as the board's focus may maintain the same on what we want to prioritize for that given year or it may change. Um, obviously there are things that we've got to do. We've got to continue to offer police service, to keep our parks open, to maintain our roads, things like that. But we also have opportunities to advance the priorities of the council at any given time. And when we set goals, it's used to set a goal and just forget about it, right? So one of the things we want to do is provide an update mid-year. Hey, this is the progress of where we're going. So you as council members can hold staff accountable and you can hold yourselves accountable to where we're going. So the first priority was downtown creation. There are a lot of moving parts there. It's been a goal that's been years in the making, a lot of different efforts and initiatives. So let's just go through and look at where we're at. Um, and I'm going to kind of go through these because it's a lot. And I would invite the board, if you want to stay, if you want to talk about a point, interject and let's have a conversation and ask any questions that you may have. So obviously, one of the things that we found in successful downtowns is a streetscape is necessary, is one that's pedestrian-friendly, that you can walk on, that has sitting areas, places for people to stay. And so we went out and we worked with a, um, an outside firm to help us create that with Max, Mr. Shong and our planning team. And, uh, and the December meeting, we provided, um, some information for y'all to consider. We got some great feedback and we'll be bringing back to y'all for consideration and potential adoption, um, when it comes to streetscape, uh, probably at our next January meeting. So that'll be coming in the near future. Next, we wanted to have a conversation of, okay, do we want to start making some streetscape investments? We're working to try to take our streetscape standards, incorporate it and make it as a development requirement for certain areas of town within our downtown. And next, what we said is, all right, as a town, do we want to make some streetscape investments? We saw how expensive it can be, but are there some key areas we want to do? And we talked about it, presented to the board and the board said, mm, we're not ready right now financially, but we're open to it in the future if funding's identified and we're ready to do it. Next, sewer capacity has been a major issue we've been dealing with. Sewer always is like gold, but at the same time, uh, Union County has a unique situation. And so we said, all right, if it's going to be years and potentially until we get sewer capacity that we need in order to do public-private partnerships and convert the downtown areas, what do we do? We don't want to just kind of sit on our laurels and do nothing. We want to make something happen. And so one of the things we're doing is we're trying to explore converting specialty, uh, existing properties that we have ever under control as a town and convert it into specialty retail shops, the kind of mom and pop, independent kind of cool hip retail spots that you'll see in downtown areas. So one of the areas we looked at was three-twenty-five Stallings Road, which is right next door. And the cost estimate was so high, the board said, we're not comfortable making this public investment. The return wouldn't be there. And so we also looked at demolition, decided not to move forward on that now. The next and perhaps the biggest thing is, hey, we want to do something, a public-private partnership with the old tractor dealership property that get the densities that we need. Um, and we found, when we looked at with D F I, that there were two major things holding us back there. The one was sewer capacity, to whereas we can make all the cool plans, we can make deals with developers, but it just, a developer could not come in and make it work because of likely sewer capacity issues right now. And so that was probably the biggest thing. And also when we looked at it, what we wanted as a town, it would require the town to step in and pay four, five million dollars plus to make it profitable for the developer to hit that six percent profitability standard that we saw when we went through with D F I. That's an independent analysis that we contracted with the school government to do that with a marketing and development expert to get that so that the board has independent and verifiable data when it comes to how the market works there. And so, um, we looked and said, all right, if a redevelopment isn't feasible right now, what are we going to do? And what we found after doing further analysis is a brewery tends to defy some of the economic laws of gravity. You see them often as a business that will be the first in for a day that's being redevelopment. You saw that in like a South End or Noda or places like that, just to name a couple of local examples, where people will drive farther than they will a restaurant to go to a brewery. So in that way, it can kind of defy the economic laws of gravity and at the same time attract and kind of establish a beachhead and be something that's a functional part of downtown. So, um, with that being said, the board and, uh, and staff talked and the board ultimately decided, hey, we need some with outside expertise to come in and determine, is this feasible? Is this even an opportunity that a brewery would be interested in? We think it'd be a good one, but did the dollars make sense? And began marketing it, worked through some internal, what are sewer issues? And what we ultimately found is that we think it is marketable for brewery. Right now, the broker is working with three different breweries that we have that are interested in that site. And, uh, working with Union County right now with one of the breweries to confirm sewer capacity. That's a fairly complicated process, more complicated than it probably seems because we've got to do some actual engineering work to determine what's going to go in there so that they can determine, get a capacity thumbs up from Union County. So that's what our broker is doing now. And once that's confirmed, uh, we'd like to bring the broker back um, to have another conversation with the board and say, this is where we're at. Um, and, uh, just, you know, make sure y'all are staying informed as we implement the board's strategy here. Um, one of the things we, we saw about is, and what we heard from D F I is, hey, um, we need to have higher densities in order to support ultimately the retail that the board is saying, hey, we want to have. So these next two, looking at that and looking at, uh, having D F I look at other development plans. One of the reasons we put that in there was because the property over here beside the park, think about it, uh, in between Stallings Road and Old Monroe Road with the park over here. Um, we talked to a developer at the time who was interested in coming in, doing a major development there. A lot of multifamily, um, other kind of housing as well as potentially some, uh, front commercial on Stallings Road there. Um, we looked at a lot of the projects. They seem to do really high-quality stuff. But when they started to look at sewer capacity issue, they disappeared. So that was a, uh, a detriment there to getting that. Moving on, uh, we set the goal, you know, it's not just about getting buildings here. We need to have activities, a reason to draw people in, not just having people living here, but people in the community coming in and viewing this area as our downtown, the central gathering place, the place for fun and community and coming together. And one of the things we said is we really want to amp up the number of, uh, events we have. And we set what we thought was a reach goal of eighteen events. And, uh, our Parks Department blew that out of the water last year and had fifty events and programs. So great job by them, um, doing that. We want to hopefully continue to make our park an area where people come and they gather. The next goal, and I skipped this one because it's the same as the other one and they're all intertwined, is sewer capacity. Okay, if it's potentially an issue with Union County, and we hope it's not, we hope that issue will get resolved, but we also want to explore some other opportunities is what we heard from the board. And so one priority is pursuing, what are our alternatives when it comes to sewer? And the board said, well, can we hook in to Charlotte Water? Is that a possible possibility? We're right on the line, Charlotte. Charlotte Water's right there. There's some areas of town that I believe they serve. And so we've contracted with Kimley Horn to work with Mr. Parker and an engineering team and do a study, say, all right, can we connect it? Is this a possibility? How much would it cost? Answer those kind of questions. Maybe it's not as expensive as we think it could be. Maybe it's more. We don't know, but we're kind of exploring that alternative now and that study is underway. So the contract was approved by council for that on September the 11th of '23. And anticipated project length is seven months, but it could be quicker. We're going to come back to the board at a midpoint there and check in and just say, hey, this is where we're at.
Do you want us to ask questions now or wait for you?
Sure, whenever you're ready.
So right now, it seemed like it was going to be roughly this midpoint. Are we going to hear from them? Do we have an ETA on that?
Absolutely. And timely question because we're planning on bringing Chip and the Kimley Horn team in at the next meeting to give an update and talk through where we are now, some things that they've analyzed and really just a general update and see where council wants to take it from there.
Thumbs up, thumbs down? Just if you wanted to give us a preview, if you will?
Thumbs kind of up, but not...
I got you.
Little more than medium?
Little bit more than medium.
It's just interesting. It's...
A six.
I think still at a high level, but it's interesting. It's really all I can say. It's, I'm excited to show you because there's opportunity, but we don't know what those costs implications are.
That's fair enough.
It is interesting. We had additional conversation with Charlotte Water as well that was, again, promising. So it's, I think it's really just going to boil down to the finer details, but at a high level, it looks promising.
All right. I mean, I just, if you already knew that it was really bad, that would be good to know.
Yeah, it's a definite maybe at this point.
It's a definite maybe.
In all seriousness though, I think we're still trying to gather all the information, get it all, do the analysis. And as soon as we get that answer, we'll bring it to y'all.
But I mean, that's better than a definite no, so.
Yeah. All right. So the next thing we wanted to do is really try to maximize the kind of positive development around the hospital and light rail. Back around the 2016, 2018 range, the town developed several small area plans, one of which was the Monroe Bypass area where the hospital is now. It's been a lot of work. And then I'll never forget, I think the mayor and I got a call from the hospital saying, hey, can we meet with the head guy, the president for the area? And we had no idea of it, sure, right? And we met and he told us they went about a hospital there. And that was, you've heard me describe it this way, from a land use planning standpoint, it's like a big alien spaceship came and landed in the middle of our plans. It changes everything. And then with the light rail potentially coming down there, it's like a second alien spaceship came and landed in the middle. It changes everything. So what we've tried to do there is to, we know that we need to reimagine the area and make sure we're kind of maximizing and taking advantage of those kind of twin anchors, try to maximize the tax-based revenue for our residents. And from there, so Mr. Shong and his team have gotten a CARPO grant. It's for 80% of the work, so great job by them. We're a bit behind on this and the reason, I think, is a pragmatic standpoint from a smaller organization in that we had two out of our three positions within planning vacant and we filled those and we're moving forward. And then also, the DOT approval process took much longer than expected. We thought it was going to take several weeks, in our minds at least, and it ended up being six months to get approval from them. So it put us six months behind theirs. But we've gotten approval and we're transitioning to align the TOD district with the Silverline study because if we did it internally now, we'd have to come back out and rip it all out and put in the new thing. So does it make sense? We think it makes sense now for the consultant to do everything at once and bring it back to the board at the same time. And so that's the intention with all these items. The TOD district, the comprehensive land use plan updates, the small area plan and development ordinance updates. We do think, we're anticipating and hoping that we can complete those tasks and bring it back to the board by November of '24, so coming up.
And again, Alex, I mean, the last we heard about the Silverline is, you know, it was ending at CPCC and that Union County was kind of stalled at wanting to do any type of funding. Is there, that's been a while back. Has there been any, I guess, updated news? Any updates or?
Not that I'm aware of. I believe from our standpoint, what I heard from our elected officials is, hey, the Union County as a government might not embrace and fully fund and fully get behind this light rail right now. What I also heard is that they could one day. And so the strategy behind this is get the land use plans together and try to identify the corridor where this light rail is going to come on and try the best we can legally. We don't have absolute power to do this, but as best we can legally, to preserve the land so that the light rail can come and be put in. Because if there's all these huge multi-story expensive buildings built where it's going to be, it's going to become that much more expensive to come in, rip out those buildings and build the light rail. If there's land preserved as best we can, it becomes much more cheaper. And if this project is cheaper in the future, it becomes more feasible. So the strategy right now recognizes that perhaps it's not a priority for Union County. At least that's what I've heard in conversations. And so we're taking that into consideration and trying to preserve the area we can, knowing that one day it may be.
Yeah, my recommendation, my thought on is our strategy should be, I don't know if y'all saw the list of projects that the state legislature funded, that Dean Arp sent out, but it's a lot of money. And all of it's infrastructure. And I think that's, you know, Union County won't be able to afford extending that light rail. It'd just be too expensive. You know, the state is where we're going to need to get that money from. So we need Dean and Todd to help us get that money. And I don't know when it'll be, but Dean's got a lot of seniority up there now. So I've talked to him about it and it's a long, slow process as we know, but that's where the... As Justice James says, why do you rob banks? That's where the money is. So that's why you go to the state and that's where the money is.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. That's a great point. It can't all be on Union County or Stallings, right? Neither of us have the money. There's going to have to be state, federal, and so this is a long-term play, right?
Lori had asked me a question. I wanted to make sure I didn't lie to her. That's the reason why.
And I do have a question on that. So I know they're in the planning phase and, I mean, I think that this project, when they came and presented to us, it's 2030-plus. So it's a long, long, long time. But I assume at some point, they've gotten to, they've gotten to the point that they are nearly done with their plans and whatever, wherever they're going is kind of finalized. Do we know when that would be?
I think we're getting there. If we're not there, I'll get an update from you on where they are from a Mecklenburg County side because I recall there being, and I think this is where we're getting at, Councilmember Hall, they're doing the design now, right? And if we wait, they approached us at one point and said, hey, the cost to do the design is this. We can lump you in from an economies-of-scale standpoint to do Mecklenburg County as well as Union County at the same time. And we looked at it and said, we can't afford to do that right now. I think that time is largely past or is passing unless we want to come up with a large check to cover the design for this. But I can check in with CATS and get a more definite answer. Kevin, do you mind making a note on that so we can check in with CATS on where they're at from a design standpoint? Thank you. Does that answer your question, Graham?
Yep.
Okay, good. One of the next priorities that we have was encourage the completion of critical state intersection projects. And there were two that really, I think, were related to this and we had in mind when we were doing this. The first is the Potter and Pleasant Plains intersection project. Been working on that for years and years.
Construction restarted today.
That's right. So I want to say a special thank you to Councilmember Ayers, who's definitely been involved and so helpful, been a voice for the town in this. But last we've heard is that the construction let date is March of 2024 and you've already seen activity, if you've been through recently with different things they're doing.
I talked to them last Wednesday. That was still the track time period, so.
So January 2024 update for Old Monroe Road is that DOT, last we've heard, has reported the anticipation of construction let date is for the summer of '25. So you've seen some of the right-of-way work, they're acquiring properties. In Indian Trail, you can see a lot of trees that have been taken down if you've been down through that route. But the project is moving forward. So Kevin, anything to add to that, either of those?
Excuse me. No, I think one small thing is just, we talked to Duke last week, who said they have all their relocate... Slow and steady.
If I can, there is a little bit of clatter on social media. And I think there's a little bit of confusion. When we say summer of 2025, is there kind of, I mean, do y'all have kind of just like a high-level bullet point of kind of what people will see over the time period? Because, I mean, we typically think major construction. However, people are going to see, you know, their life disrupted with these movements, the tree cutting and things like that there. Do we have kind of a breakdown of kind of just kind of anticipated impacts to people's lives even before major construction starts?
Yeah, no, that's a great point, Councilmember Ayers, because, you know, we look at this, we think about, oh, we just want the roads bigger, but it has such a big impact on businesses, organizations, people that may live along the route as property gets bought up to create that progress, right? So Kevin, would you mind checking with DOT and see if you can maybe just get like a standard process timeline? And we might be able to share that and happy to talk with anybody and certainly get anybody you know that's affected to the right people at DOT.
I mean, I mean, that tree, the tree cutting is in Stallings now. So it's, yeah, so it's moving close to like, I mean, it's already past Morningside and it's now getting close to the Rock Store. So I think people, it's just generating a lot of questions online now that things are actually starting to hit the town, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think there's also a lot of questions around, well, if it's not actually going to start construction to, you know, '26, why are they cutting trees now? So I think that's, I mean, '26 feels like a long way away for them to be cutting trees today, so that's all. Lot of questions, that's all.
Thanks, David. Anything else, y'all, on that? All right. And then one of the things we talked about is, hey, we're talking about a lot of these really exciting initiative, high-level stuff, economic itself. The board is really focused on kind of the future, right? But we also, you know, wanted to focus on, hey, we need to make sure we can maintain our core services, the bread and butter, picking up the trash, providing the police services, parks. And these priorities came out of that. So the board addressed the immediate pay disparity proposal for the sworn police officers. And that's had a real effect, I think. I know Chief and I have talked and I think our ability to keep and retain and attract really high-quality candidates has increased and that's shown with just the number of officers we're able to keep. So thank you for that. One of the things that we also committed to do was provide a police staffing analysis for council's consideration. And one thing we wanted to do, because I've seen these lazily done, is we really wanted to go in-depth and really have a good analysis to give to the board because a lot of these are just based on population, based on, you know, per capita. And after talking with Chief, we felt like you can't just use like a population number. It has to be specific to the community to really determine what the need is there. So we're working on that and we anticipate finalizing that internally in the next week or so and bringing it in the next January meeting to the board for consideration. We're happy to bring that during budget time if you prefer otherwise, but otherwise, if we get something done that y'all want us to do it, we try to bring it to you as soon as we can. Pay study in '23, '24. We talked about with the board and said, hey, now's maybe not the right time, but the board said, we'd like to look at doing a pay study in fiscal year '24, '25. So that's something we'll bring up and bring y'all a cost and have a conversation during budget time as we come up. And finally, provide analysis on the solid waste fee. So we provided some information to the council and we'll check back in later during the budget process and see if that's something you'd like to revisit. And then finally, we made some rate changes to our stormwater structure. It allows us to be kind of more sustainable moving forward. Ultimately, the board chose to make the fee flat for residential and updated it a little bit more with commercial. And then a couple miscellaneous items. We continue to have the conversations about the 50th anniversary, so that's exciting. And we continue to work with the fire department on hopefully getting a department location here in town, so. I believe right now, the board previously approved waiving their zoning fees for coming in. And I believe last we checked, is the fire department has not submitted yet. Okay. Okay. And that concludes the priorities. Appreciate your time. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Alex. Yeah, let's, okay, let's do that. All right, let's come back, just table this a second. She wants to vote on the powder coating.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Because I got a couple of questions for you.
Sure. So just real quick, let me grab my notebook here. So there is, everybody remember the powder coating issue? There's a DOT project that we talked about in 2018, 2019. And there's a powder coating, which is kind of a super great painting of the poles. It makes them look better aesthetically. And the estimate we got to do the poles and the pedestals was $2,280. And they just now, recently in 2023 in the fall, came back to us and said, hey, we're ready to do the project. Are y'all still good with the cost? We said, well, is the cost the same? They said, well, we don't know yet because it, because we haven't bid it out yet. We said, the board said, we'll go bid it out and if it's within the cost estimate from back in 2019, we'll do it. If it's higher, come back to us, Alex, and we'll give you direction on how to handle it. So the estimate back in 2019 was $2,280. And it's come back at $3,738.73. So not a huge surprise it went up just because it's, you know, 2019 to 2024, you know, costs have gone up. But you're looking at, you know, very rough difference of about $1,500, $1,400 to $1,500, so.
And so the poles we're looking at are ones down by the hospital?
No, sir, it's not, it's past the hospital, if you will. So let me pull up a map here. And I think this will, it's closer to the bypass exit down there, closer to Chestnut Parkway. It's part of that project on Highway 74. For your patients, this is a very long agreement.
Are you just talking about one pole here?
It is, let me go back up here. It is... The Mast Arm Pole and two Signal Head pedestals. the mast arm pole and two signal head pedestals. And then if we go down, we can see the location of these here.
Yeah, let's look at that map real quick.
Okay, so looking at here. Apologize, I don't know what's going on. All right. So this is Highway 74 right here. And I believe this is Chestnut. And you can see here, here's Union Beltway Road, and here's the bypass up here. See it kind of peeking, going off, if you get in on the bypass there.
So that is right on the edge of Stallings, right on the edge.
It's close, yes, sir.
Yeah. Oh, me, yeah, I thought, I misread it. I didn't see the map. I thought it was down by the hospital.
Hmm, I see.
So where is it on that map?
So if you look here, I believe this is the intersection with the mast arm and the two pedestrian heads located right here. Kind of red bubbly area. Mast arm heads, I think we've got several that are probably fairly similar on Highway 74, several locations. Probably not as similar, these are probably smaller, I would think. But at the intersection of Matthews Indian Trail and Stallings Road, that's powder coating. That's what it looks like.
Yeah, we asked, Lori, just for your, we asked DOT to do this when they installed them all, but they forgot. And that's why the ones at the intersection with the hospital, Stallings Road and bypass are not powder coated. They're just ugly silver. Well, I'll give my opinion. That changes my mind. Granted, I'd like to get them all done. So even the one down, you know, Stallings Road and the bypass. But, you know, maybe we do them one at a time. I don't know. Because they do look good when they're, when they're black powder coated. Want this, but I'm less concerned about that intersection looking attractive than I am the one, you know, this down the street here on Stallings Road.
Also, for the money, I'd do it now. It's just going to get more expensive.
That's true.
I mean, and like I told Alex, I mean, I'm a big fan of powder coating. Just the last time that we voted on this, I was actually installing powder-coated coverings at my house. So it was like, well, it'd be tough for me to vote down something that I did for my own home. So, I mean, it'll last for years and it'll look good. That's just my thought.
No, we don't own these poles, right?
That's right.
It's not our responsibility to maintain them?
It would be our responsibility to maintain them aesthetically.
Oh, no, I mean, it was not our responsibility currently to maintain them.
Correct, yes, sir.
So I'm against it.
Well, to maintain them would be to maintain the powder coating, not the, not the pole itself. You know, somebody runs into it and damages it. Powder coating in 10 years, who knows? Hey, what's the pleasure of the council then? Any other questions for Alex on this? Make a motion, one way or the other?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the additional funding to, I don't have the exact dollar amount in front of me.
$2,200.
Yeah, so the original amount was $2,280 bucks, good memory. And the new amount is $3,738.73. So about $37.50.
I'll second it.
Got a motion to approve the powder coating, Mr. Ayers, seconded by Mrs. Drake. All in favor, say aye.
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 Got opposed?
Aye.
And so Mr. Hall, three to one, Mr. Hall opposes. So a motion passed. All right, thank you, Alex.
Yeah, sure. So what I'll do is I'll bring back a budget amendment next time in January for the board to approve. Thank you.
Well, let's jump back real quick on the priorities. I do, I got one question. While we're talking about sewer all the time. And I'm surprised Mrs. Drake's phone hadn't been blowing up with the apartments being built behind the Harris Teeter on Ottawa Road. You know, now you can see them from the road. What in?
Pretty, they're there.
They're there.
They're there.
And I apologize to the Victory Neighborhood because I voted against it and it just was a bad idea. But they're there now. So what role do we play, Alex and Kevin, now with construction as far as sewer? I mean, they obviously have gotten their sewer capacity. Brian Matthews sent me a list of projects that were ranked. And I don't remember even seeing that one on there, but maybe I misread it. And, but that sucked up a lot of sewer. That project is huge. And so I don't know if we can find out how much sewer capacity that, that project took up and how it's going to affect everything else in the town of Stallings.
That was approved before my tenure.
Oh, yeah.
It's been at least.
But.
I mean, I won't get into, you got one of the nicest neighborhoods in Union County and then you got a massive apartment complex right beside it. I talked about just bad planning.
Especially in the winter.
Yeah, I rode, yeah, I rode through there last week. It's just right there on top of you. Luckily, we got them to just go three stories. They wanted to go, yeah, they wanted to go four. All right, any other questions on the priorities for Alex?
May I make a motion to be excused? Did I do that right, Melanie? Okay, okay.
Second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Ayers. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Taylor Ray. All righty. All right, we need to go into closed session now pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6. Can I get a motion?
Mayor, could we include in that motion to invite Ms. Karen Reed, our HR director, to, please?
All right.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session for NCGS 143-318-11. And we'll include Karen Reed into that closed session.
All right.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
I think this time around, we're going to stay in here. So.